That's President McMinister getting back at me for my lousy job.
I was paying attention, a little bit to last.
No, we should do this formally. Coming around the bend here, Councilor Darcy, Councilor Katz, Councilor Bradley MacArthur, Councilor in State Rep. Tom Stanley, Councilor Paz, Councilor Dunn, Councilor Durkey. On the other side, Councilor Harris, Councilor Vidal, Councilor LaFosse, President McMinister, Councilor LeBlanc, and Councilor O'Brien. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Very nice.
The clerk could read the next new matter.
Your request of the mayor for the approval of a financing plan in the amount of $4.5 million for the acquisition of the property located at One Baum Ave. for horticultural, agricultural, recreational, and educational uses.
Councilor Dunn, you rise.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Due to the proximity of my home to this property, I will be recusing myself from any voting for this matter and the next two matters on the docket.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilor Dunn has recused herself. If I could ask Councilor Durkey and Councilor Harris to invite the mayor into the chamber. Welcome, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, everyone.
Please be seated.
Okay. Mr. President, Vice President, is it the first matter?
It is the matter regarding the financing plan.
Financing plan, okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just so I can, just so we get ahead of ourselves, we don't need to go into executive session or anything tonight, correct?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If I could just put this over here. A minute, Mr. Vice President, is that right?
Absolutely, thank you.
So, everybody's, I don't know if you can see above. This is the 5-acre parcel right here that we're talking about. This is Lexington Street. This is Mount Nyhatares, Mount Vernon, Mount Wally. Any questions about the plan?
Councilor Darcy.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much for coming in here this evening. I support the acquisition of the farmland. However, the Ward Two neighbors and direct abudders to the five-acre farm located at One Baum Ave. need to weigh in on the matter. And for those of you that are watching from home, the elected Ward Two official, Councilor Dunn, very unfortunately must recuse herself from any and all discussion in on voting on the matter since she is a direct abutter at 58 Mount Wally Road. Massachusetts Open Meeting Law does not allow elected officials who are abudders from participating in discussion or voting as for potential conflicts of interest. The Ward Two residents and neighbors need to weigh in on, to the city council as they have not had proper representation due to the recusal of Ward Counselor Dunn. The direct abudders and nearby neighbors of the farm include hundreds of residents living at Mount Vernon, Mount Wally, Mount Ida, Piedmont Fur, Satcham, Rosemont, Trimont, Montclair, and College Farm Road, just to name a few. So, that being the case, and mind you, I support the acquisition of this farm, but I move that the city council host a citizen input hearing at the council on Monday, April 11th at 6:30 to get feedback from the neighbors and residents concerning the acquisition of the parcel and the council verbiage on the order concerning the specific purposes of the acquisition. That's my motion, Mr. Chair.
So, you've heard a sense of the motion. Any questions? Councilor Harris.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. Just a point of clarification, we have how many at-large counselors on our city council?
Six.
And those at-large counselors represent the entire city, is that correct?
They do.
So, just stating for the record, I know that the Ward Counselor had to recuse, those are the rules. It would be the case for me if we had any sort of conflict, that's to protect ourselves and the city. And in the case of any conflict, and also to follow state law, which is an open meeting law. But there is representation for Ward Two through the at-large counselors, and that is our form of government, which is representation. So, I want to make sure, as we state our passions for the record, that we also state clearly what is truly representative, because there are people who door knocked in Ward Two and got elected for that, and that would be the case in all the wards, that the at-larges represent as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. President McMinister.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is an interesting idea, because many of us have conflicts all over the city. I have a conflict constantly, constantly with the Fernal property, and no one's ever said to me, or anybody on this council, let's stop what we're doing so we can hear from the Ward Three neighbors. Before I would vote to support this idea, I will state that I want to hear everything about the matter tonight, so I'm going to move to table the motion.
On the motion to table the motion.
Roll call.
Roll call's been requested.
So, Mr. Vice President.
Council Paz.
Point of information, so voting yes moves the question?
No, this is on, voted to table the motion to have a public hearing on April 11th at 6:30 PM.
So, what's a yes do, and what does a no do?
Yes means we table that motion that goes to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Council O'Brien.
Mr. Vice President, just, so after, if this motion gets tabled, and then there's a presentation, at the end of it, the Ward Three Counselor could then move to take it off the table again.
Sure.
Correct.
All right, thank you. If the clerk could call Council Akava.
Council Akava.
So, this, if we just state that this is a motion to table the motion, and a yes vote would table that, and then we'd move on to the presentation. Mr. Clerk.
Councilor Bradley MacArthur.
Yes.
Councilor Darcy.
No.
Councilor Dunn has recused. Councilor Durkey.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Katz.
Yes.
Councilor Akava.
Yes.
Councilor LaFosse.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc.
Yes.
President McMinister.
Yes.
Council O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilor Paz.
Yes.
Councilor Stanley.
Yes.
Councilor Vidal. Twelve in favor, one opposed, one recused.
The motion carries, the motion is tabled. Councilor Darcy, you stole the floor.
Mr. President, I specifically asked a question. I did not, I said, do you have any question about this plan? So, I didn't even discuss anything respectfully.
Understood. Councilor Darcy.
Thank you. Could the mayor please explain to us the financing aspect, because that's what's before us right now, the financing of the 4.5 million. Why isn't this a loan order?
Since what's before us is the money?
Correct.
I'd be happy to discuss anything about money, but before I do that, there are three questions, I think, that have to be answered. Should we purchase it? What we do with it, and who will have care, custody, and control? So, with regard to the specific request, I respectfully request approval of the following financing plan for the land taking of the property located at One Baum Ave. in the amount of $4,500,000. The purpose of the intended acquisition is horticulture, agriculture, recreation, and all education use, or a combination thereof. Since a loan order cannot be approved within the needed timeframe, I respectfully request an appropriation of 4.5 million from the unreserved fund balance. From unreserved fund balance, number 1-0-0-0-3590, 3590, 4.5, to Mayor Land Acquisition One Baum, or 1, 121, 5800, 613003. In addition, I respectfully request the city council approve the attached loan authorization in the amount of 4.5 million. The appropriation request from unreserved fund balance will be rescinded at the time the loan authorization is finally approved, and we have done that, as the city auditor knows, with several of the transactions that we have done. So, that's the answer to the question in my communication to the city council dated March 23rd, 2022.
Thank you. And what is, what was the needed timeframe? What's the, is it a month or two months, or?
The needed timeframe is for the first reading, and then it has to go publication, and after the publication, it has to come back for a second and third reading.
So, Mr. Clerk, how much time is that?
Well, if you were to give it a first reading tonight, it wouldn't be able to be published until next Thursday, and then it would require 10 days before you give it a final reading, and after final reading, there's a 20-day referendum period to satisfy.
So, about a month, is what you're saying?
Maybe closer to two months.
Two months, okay, great. That's all the questions I have, but I'm going to move approval of the financing of the 4.5 million.
On the motion, Madam Mayor.
The only thing I would like to say for the record is this. The owner of this property has received two, and this is a notarized statement as to the truth, has received an offer from MR Development to buy it for $4,700,000, an offer from Baystone Development offered to buy it for $4,750,000, and other residential developers wanting to develop in Walton have indicated their definite interest in buying at the above price if I decide to put up for sale. As you know, counselors, the person came to us, the owner. Now, I would like to say two other things, if I could, Mr. President, Vice President?
Absolutely.
Now, those two developers are multifamily developers, so this is a five-acre parcel. It's surrounded by mostly neighbors, and the director butter to it is the city of Walton. Under the governor's bill, a five-acre parcel are able to petition to the ZBA or the city council if they wanted to do multifamily, but the transportation over here does not qualify for the MBTA, I don't believe, because they eliminated that bus in North Walton. If they were to reinstitute the bus, it may be. What's the significance of that is you only need eight votes of city councils instead of 10 to be able to do that if you rezone the property. This five-acre parcel, okay, is just that. It doesn't mean you couldn't put a Chapter 40B over here, and quite frankly, I have a history, and I don't want to go through it, but I can, of all the open space purchases that we worked on together, including Smith Street, 16 acres, 287 Gro Street, 1.967 acres, 81 Arcadia Ave., .134 acres, 167 before Lincoln Street, 26.339 acres, better known as Sanderson Heights, 385 Tripola Road, one acre, 342 Warren Street, the Arigo Farm Number One, 4.055 acres. The 48 acres at the Stigmatines, which was originally going to be a minimum of 200, 327 units to 600 units, was their last number that they gave to us, and you could not tell, this talked to the city of Walton at all, until the 40B application was filed with the ZBA. The Gable's Children Unit on Lexington, I mean, at Tripola Road, which is now known as Mackerel Hill, 7.35. Lot 1 on Tripola Road, 6.45 acres. The Farmer Fernal School, 190 acres. The Farmer O' Ladies Land, 34 acres. And we also, together, and that's what I'm talking about, we work together, helped them secure the rectory land from the state. 240 Beaver Street, 28 acres, not including all the other parcels that were bought by previous elected officials prior to 2004. We also negotiated the gift of very farm, the Farmer Polaroid parcel adjacent to Prospect Hill, 20.85 acres. Almost all the parks and playgrounds have been upgraded or renovated. The Veterans Rink as a long-term lease, thanks to the actions of the mayor and city council, the Veterans Fields, the bike path, the rail trail, Ward Avenue is being cleared. So, the open space and recreation has been a joint goal of both this city council, prior city councils, and the neighbors, and everybody else. So, I just want to say that for the record.
Thanks, Madam.
And this parcel, as you know, is right in the middle of Lakeview, and I feel that we should acquire it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Vidal.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor. Mayor, thank you for being here tonight. This is a very important purchase, in my opinion, and lately, we've been buying a lot of farmland, and this adds to our stock of farmland in the city of Walton. Back in 2018, during my second term as an at-large counselor, I recall the former Ward Two Counselor submitted a resolution in which I believe I co-signed, in which we were looking into purchasing this property back then. But back then, things, they were a bit different, but at the same time, we didn't get an approval or a support from the school committee. And I know, right now, we're just talking about the money, and you mentioned that clearly, and I understand that. And back then, there were different numbers than the numbers there are now. At one point tonight, we're going to be talking about giving this property to the school department. So, my question is, do we have any sort of interest? Or does that interest that they did not have in 2018 still there?
First of all, I have to say for the record, the school committee couldn't be interested because the heirs were fighting with each other. So, the city solicitor at the time attempted to get the property in response to the resolution. They weren't able to do it. So, then they, you know, somebody else bought it privately. To answer the question specifically, I have met with the school committee and discussed it with them, and they are in support.
Okay. Thank you very much. That definitely clears up that scenario, because I wasn't, I was aware of some sort of discussion among the people who owned the property back then, but I wasn't aware to what degree. But what I do remember from 2018 was that, that we couldn't really, there was no interest, and I guess some of that reasoning behind that. And now, the fact that you're telling us right now that the school department, the school committee, is interested in that property, that kind of helps me make this more clear. That's my only question for now. I think I have another question when we get to the part about custody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Bradley MacArthur.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to the mayor, thank you for being here tonight. I am curious about some of the language, specifically recreational use, a definition of recreational. Could that include athletic fields or parking lots?
Well, it can include athletic fields, you know, grass fields can include that. But walking the site, the current owner has cleared most of the farm. You know, the farm was very well overgrown, so he's cleared it mostly. There is another area, you know, there's, on the right towards Satcham, it drops way down. As you go back, you know, I walked it specifically on both sides to go up and down it. There is a little bit of flat area right when you leave the farm, there's some there. Other than that, it's all declines. So, the land could come out where the wetland is right now, you could get there if you follow, so if you traverse along the western part of the boundary, you could actually come in, but you really have a hard time getting up that ravine there. But on the other side, you could come down, and where the first natural field at the new high school is, right there, you could come in over there. That would be the natural spot. You could also walk to school from this as well, by the access, and I'm not suggesting that we go through and open up those two streets, but there is an access right now that goes through, and the current owner has deeded rights to go from Mount Wally through, and then come through there. So, they could have some children in the area that walk to school there and come through the high school that way.
Thank you, and...
So, to answer your question specifically, there's only two flat areas up right near where the farm is, on the other side of the rock wall, and they would have to be, you know, small areas.
Okay, thank you.
They have your recreation there.
Thank you. And another question, just to the language, why not include passive recreational use as a definition, as opposed to just recreational?
Horticulture is passive, I believe, and educational use is passive as well, so...
Great. And one last question, through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor. Does the definition of educational use include anything related to parking lots or athletic fields?
Educational use is a very broad use, and I'm not going to sit here and say that it's not.
Okay.
But it is broad, but it has to be related to the educational use. It can't be for something, you know what I mean? And naturally, they would have to come for money to do anything to this property. They, you know, they couldn't just do it, with the exception of the farm. And the owner of the property has agreed, because he's been farming all his life, you know, when you call the Casella, the Mantinuto, Arigo, you know, there were a lot of farms at the time. But he is committed to at least two years of teaching the students as part of the farming process here, and he, you know, he likes it. He probably will donate much of the equipment at the end as well, but he hasn't indicated that he wishes to give up farming yet, and I think that's a good stewardship, that he would be able to provide some educational oversight. And honestly, he would like to have some young students to help him with the farm as well, because, you know, it's a lot of work.
Thank you. No more questions, thanks.
Thank you. So, this motion is for the approval of the appropriation of 4.5 million. On the motion, Council Akava.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Question to you or the clerk here. I apologize. Are we asking all questions in general? I know the councilors to my right stopped asking questions in terms of the care, custody, and control. Is this just about the money currently before us?
So, we've got three matters on the agenda for tonight for Baum Ave. This matter has to do with the financing plan for the 4.5, and specifically, this motion right now from Councilor Darcy is approval of the appropriation for 4.5. We'll have a second motion after that for the approval of the loan authorization for a first reading.
Okay, so I'll try to keep it to the finances at this point?
If you could, yep.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. How many different numbers did you get in, did we get for this? Is this the number given to you from the seller? Was this?
We received an appraisal, as you are aware. We received an appraisal. He had a different figure, so I had to go back to our appraiser to determine if the value of the appraisal and that figure was within the appraised value, and I have that.
So, your appraisal was lower than the?
Yes, that's correct, as you know.
Are you allowed to divulge that number?
It's in, I can divulge it, I don't have any problem to not divulge it. I'm in a public meeting. Got the wrong one, have to get the other file. $4,030,000, and then the high and low range went from, excuse me, one minute, I have to find that page. I have to sit down and do it. I have to apologize. I don't want to...
Madam Mayor, honestly, that number works right for right now for my question, so you don't have to keep going. You don't have to keep digging.
So, the number, so the appraiser that did the original appraiser came back and said, if you base between the high and low numbers that they had, the 4.5 is within that number.
So, it looks, it looks like something came in closer to 5, then, and 4 and 1/2, 4 and 1/2 in the middle.
The two, the two offers that he has is more than the 4.5.
And a few years ago, when there was talk of the city trying to buy it, there just was no communication from, from the owners?
No. The owners were in a petition to petition, so he, the city solicitor actually went and communicated with them and talked to them, and he was able to communicate with some of the heirs, but he was not able to communicate with the other heirs. So, they each had own lawyers, and they eventually went to court, so, with each other.
And do we know why that, when this went to a private sale, the city, and I'm not saying they had to, I'm just curious as to why there was no communication with the mayor, with the city, when the time to sell actually came?
That's correct. There was none, that I'm aware of, because I asked the city solicitor, did you have any more communication when I found out there was sold? He said no.
And was there any attempt from, to purchase it from the current owner in the last two years before this?
He was not interested in even talking to me at the time.
Okay.
Or another, there was another matter that we were handling, and he was, it was on another street, so he wasn't really too happy with me, and I'll be quite frank with you.
Okay. I guess these are all my financial questions at the time, so I'm all set for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Second time around, Council Vidal.
Thank you very much. I forgot to ask a question. Mayor, through you, Mr. Vice President, to the mayor, the, again, we'll try to keep within the financial, but I think this has a lot to do with what we're buying. So, I had a chance to review the plot plan for this property, and as, this is going to be a friendly take-in, are there any easements on this property?
He has an easement that comes from Mount Wally.
Okay. But once that is, once you... But once that easement, once you have this friendly taken, do the easements get erased, therefore we get a clean marketable title? Or how does that work? The easement remains with the property?
I would have to ask the city attorney that. Yep.
There is currently one easement related to this property, and it's to the benefit of this property. It's an access easement across property to the north that allows access from Mount Wally onto this parcel. So the taking order that we have drafted would retain that, that access right, and it would be part of the, what was taken. So we basically have followed the chain of title. The taking would reflect what's currently on record, so it wouldn't extinguish that easement, but it would be part of the rights that were acquired by the city.
Okay. So then the title will reflect pretty much, will just exchange names, but the easement will remain with it as it has for many other previous years?
That's correct. Yes.
And the fact that you say it benefits the property, to what degree does this easement benefit the property?
It provides access from this property to Mount Wally Street.
Okay.
It's like a right-of-way easement.
So is, there isn't any sort of, like, it's, let's say, utility easement? It's not that sort of thing?
It's a, like a way.
It's just a way, like a paper-
The right to pass and repass.
Okay, okay. That's all there is. There is no sewer easement or any sort of, like, underground easement?
No.
Okay. All right. So then we will have a full, clean, clear, marketable title with the easement?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. That was my only question. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. President McMenman.
So it is, and it isn't directly related to the financing, but it would help my concept to understand a little bit more about, about this. So if I might ask the mayor and the attorney, our attorney, if we purchase the property for this amount of money and the right to the easement as a passageway comes along with that purchase to us, conversely, if we were not the purchaser of the property and it were to go to a private party, would the right to that easement and passage over that easement go to the private party?
Yes, it would. That's part of the chain of title and part of the deed as it exists, so.
So let's take that a step further. So if it's not the city and it's a private party, what is the land zoned as? A1?
A2.
A2. So if I recall, the intense discussion that this city council went through several years ago regarding this property, we were made aware that the purchaser was purchasing with the possibility, number one, not to keep it totally agricultural, but if it were to be developed under the A2 guidelines, what would be the number of dwelling units that that land could have then? This is then, before the governor's bill of five acres. That's then.
So there is a plan that was drawn up, a feasibility plan for this property. It hasn't gone to the Board of Survey and Planning, but that feasibility plan shows 11 lots on this parcel.
So would those 11 lots go into a subdivision plan? And if it were to do that, it would need two separate means of access and egress. Am I correct?
Yes. I'll get that out.
So this parcel has access not just through the easement, but also Mount Ida and Mount Vernon?
I've been up there. The day those first trees came down, I was up there every single day. I saw a couple of my friends up there watching. I've been up there more than once. I know the topography of the land. I know the height of the northern part of the land versus the other side. I'm very familiar. I'm just trying to get to the point here with the money and the other possibilities of what could go there. So a subdivision plan could be filed with 11 house lots?
Based on the feasibility plan that the current owner had drafted, that's what it shows. Again, it has not yet been to the planning board for approval, but it appears that that is a feasible possibility for this, for this parcel, based on the lot area, the minimum lot size, and the need for an access roadway.
And if we, so the two means of access and egress are there, and so it would go with, to us, and therefore if we gave care, custody, and control, it would go to the school committee or school department. If it remains with the owner, then that owner is then going to be free to negotiate with those facets attached to the land, negotiate whatever that owner is going to negotiate with the buyer.
Correct.
Now, if there were to be a, an application for a comprehensive permit, I won't say the word, but we all know what that means, but if there were to be an application for a comprehensive permit, would all of those facets that I just elaborated on run with the land for that comprehensive permit?
Yes, they would.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. So the motion before us is to approve the appropriation of 4.5 million dollars. On the motion-
Roll call.
Roll call's been requested.
Yes.
Counselor Darcy?
Yes.
Counselor Dunn is recused. Counselor Durkey?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Katz?
Yes.
Counselor LaCava?
No.
Counselor Fossey?
Yes.
Counselor Little Blank?
Yes.
President McMenman?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Apaz?
Yes.
Counsel Stanley?
Yes.
Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
All in favor? One opposed, one recused? The matter passes. Counsel Adasi makes a motion for, to approve a loan authorization, this loan authorization for 4.5 million for a first reading. On the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If the clerk could read the next new matter.
Request of the mayor for the approval of a friendly taking of the property located at One Baum Ave for the cultural, agricultural, recreational, and educational uses.
Madam Mayor.
So the next item is the friendly taking order that was prepared by Attorney Lockman, and she has approved it as to farm and with all the things that she has previously stated tonight to you.
Thank you. Counsel Adasi.
Mr. President, this is concerning the council order, the taking.
This is approval of a friendly, yeah, correct. Friendly taking, yep.
Thank you very much. In my few discussions with some of the neighbors of Ward II, I've only had a few, and that's why I asked for an input hearing next week. The neighbors do not want large parking lots, buildings, stadiums, as would be allowed under the current language of the council order as proposed by the mayor. The existing council order language is too general. In its current form, we are setting up ourselves for another Jericho Hill, in which an environmentally important and geographically significant parcel of land, which was acquired by all intents and purposes for open space but not suitably protected, because the language on the council order stated was for, quote, "all municipal purposes," end quote. Basically, anything goes. The mayor's verbiage in this current order states "for all educational purposes," which can include parking lots, stadiums, roadways, buildings, and other structures. Hence, I move to modify the second sentence in the council order to read as follows. "The purpose of the intended acquisition of One Baum Avenue is for horticulture, agriculture, and educational uses related to the same whilst preserving the entirety of the land in perpetuity as open space, farmland, or passive recreation." This language will ensure that the historic Arigo Farm will be protected in perpetuity as open space for farming and passive recreation. That's my motion. Thank you.
On the motion.
Point of order, Mr. Vice President.
Madam Mayor.
I think you have to read what the order says first. And the order that says, it says the first sentence, not second sentence, that the following described property, including all buildings and trees thereon, be and hereby is taken by right of eminent domain in fee for the municipal purposes of, unlike in the past, it said for municipal purposes. This says specifically, of horticulture, agriculture, recreation, and all educational uses or a combination thereof. That is the first sentence. The second sentence is this taking is made under the provisions of Chapter 79, in all, in every power thereto enabling so. Respectfully, the only, there is language in there. I don't want everybody to think that it's the same as for all municipal purposes.
You're arguing there's language in there to protect-
There is language in there, respectfully. You know, they might not like what the language is, but it's not for all municipal purposes, and I don't want that to be conveyed out there. It's for those purposes stated there. Education, recreation, agriculture, or horticulture or a combination. Thank you, Mr. President.
Second time around, Counsel Adasi.
Yeah. The point that I was trying to make is that by stating "all educational uses," that doesn't prohibit a stadium, a parking lot, roadways, buildings, and other structures. It's different than "for all municipal purposes," but it still allows everything and anything. And I think if we're acquiring this parcel, this parcel for farmland and for open space, then let's state it in the order. Why are we opening the envelope to many other things that could go there? And that's why I wanted to have the neighbors in here, because I want them to weigh in. Maybe they do want that, but we don't know because they didn't have a ward council that could lobby on their behalf. But that's, that's, that's my two cents. Thank you.
I can just say for the record, so the same thing, when you have farm day, that's a recreational use. So if you don't allow some recreational uses, then it's going to be very difficult to do anything other than horticulture and agriculture. So respectfully, I'm not asking, I've already agreed to restrict the stadium, and the school committee is going forward with Larry Field. So this, this here is not my intention, and most importantly, they would have to come to get money from any city council, whether it be this one or the future and any mayor, you know, and this mayor is not going to have a stadium or parking lots or all that because we have that on the main site. I want to say one other thing for the record. No city council, no school committee, and, you know, or mayor should have to go through the process that we had to go through. The issue of not overburdening the land, I have a record on that. This property was very sensitive, but for the first time in many, many years, including with the former high school, they don't properly plant. This is adjacent to the high school. That's the reason, one of the reasons why I have recommended limiting it and not putting it for all municipal purposes, respectfully, to the council. And that's to you, to you, Mr. Vice President, to the Counselor from Ward III. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Third time around, Counsel Adasi.
Thank you. I'm in no way questioning your commitment to open space. You've been a champion since you began office in the year 2004. All I'm saying is that if it's our intent to acquire this for farmland and for passive recreation and for agriculture, then it should be stated explicitly by adding in all educational uses, you're putting at risk not for you, but for a mayor in the future could decide, I'd like a stadium there, it's very nice and flat, and the neighbors are going to have a difficulty with that, a great difficulty. So that's why, if it were me, I would constrict the language to protect the neighbors. So could I have a roll call on my motion?
Before that, Counsel Fossey.
Mr. Vice President, through you to the mayor. I hear what you're saying, Mayor. Horticultural, agriculture, recreation, educational uses. I mean, we don't know what the future holds, and you kind of don't want to pigeonhole yourself into limiting. But did I hear correctly that something as simple as even a parking lot would have to come before the city council as a, as a request? That we couldn't just, future mayors down the line aren't just going to be able to develop this property? Is that, is that a true statement?
They wouldn't have the money to do it.
So they-
And it's not, where the farm is, is level. Okay? There's another little level area on the other side of the farm where the rock wall is. The rest of it goes down.
So my, my, my point is, the neighbors, the residents, will have representation. They, it will never be, wake up one morning and paved a parking lot. It has to come back before us. There will be a Ward II counselor, there will be 15 members of this body that would have to appropriate funds before anything could happen. Short of that, it remains as a field, as is right now.
No, short of that, right now, it's a farm.
Yeah.
Mr. Manteno cleared the property to make a working farm. He did it over a period of a couple, two, three years. So he cleared one section. He cleaned up all around it, and he was very mindful of involving the neighbors in that process, particularly on Mount Wally. On the other side, there's a huge ravine that goes down to get up to Satcham's side. So, but the flat area of this land is currently the farm that was created again by Mr. Manteno.
So, thank you. I've, I've had the opportunity to walk it as well, and I support that language that you have here in not altering it in any way. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fossey. Counsel Harris.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. Through you to the mayor, or to the clerk. Can we read the order as stated? We came in here and kind of, you know, jumped right in the middle, and I think what we've got to do is walk it back a little bit, and passions run high on this issue, and they have for, for this site. But this council came together, voted to create a school, and now we have a unique opportunity to obtain yet another five-acre parcel of open space adjacent to an educational facility that we're investing $300 million in. I'd like the order read as is, so it's very clear to this council what is before us. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion before us to change some language.
I'm interested in what actually was brought forward in the original proposal versus the change.
Okay. It's two, it's two pages long. We can have the clerk read that.
The mayor highlighted it, so if we could just go to the area of- The mayor highlighted it, so if we could just go to the area of concern.
I'm going to ask the clerk if he'd read the first two paragraphs. I think that covers what you're looking for.
That sounds good to me. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President, Vice President.
Ordered, "That the following described property, including all buildings and trees thereon, being hereby is taken by right of eminent domain in fee for the municipal purposes of horticulture, agriculture, recreation, and all educational uses or combination thereof. This taking is made under the provisions of Chapter 79 of the Massachusetts General Laws and by every other power heretofore enabling. Said property consists of a certain parcel of vacant land situated in Waldham, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, being parcel one on the deed dated October 4, 1952, recorded with the Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds in Book 7974, Page 156, containing five acres, and more completely shown on Plan Number 828 of 2020 at the South Middlesex Registry of Deeds as follows."
Thank you very much. I appreciate that enumeration. So in here, in what you just clearly stated for the record, and I want to thank you for that, is for the municipal purposes thereof, and then there's a numeration of the farming, agriculture, education. So through you, Mr. Vice President, to either the mayor or the attorney for the city, what can you put there? I mean, we're splitting hairs over a word, is what it sounds like to me, and we just clearly stated what's in the order. So before we take this vote, what can you put there based on that language?
With the current zoning?
Correct.
I don't believe all those other things can go in there, you know. But I'm going to have...
The purpose of this language that you put in here is to...
Okay. The purpose of the education is because it's next to the high school. Okay? And with it being next to the high school, it's not the main part of the high school, it's five acres. So right now, they would have to comply with the existing zoning.
Yep.
And educational, recreation, and horticulture complies with the existing zoning. I don't know if Attorney Lockman has anything further. I'm not, honestly, the zoning person to talk.
So under education, recreation, and horticulture, please approach. Attorney Lockman, can you put a stadium there?
So educational uses, as many of you are aware, do carry some level of protection under zoning, under the Dover Amendment. So there is some flexibility with respect to the types of educational uses that can be placed on a parcel in a residential zoning district, which is the reason that the school was able to be constructed where it is. However, the parcel size limitations, the setbacks, the height restrictions, all of those dimensional requirements still come into play, and you reasonably regulate those educational uses to fit the nature of the neighborhood. So there is some leeway, but again, constrained by dimensional requirements and reasonable regulations in zoning.
So the language that starts this off, municipal purposes thereof, and then you enumerate these others, that is a restriction that you're putting forward here?
Yes. This is actually very narrowly restricted. Horticulture and agriculture, you can do farming activities, which are allowed by right in this area on five acres anyway. So that is within the scope of zoning. So the horticulture and agricultural farming activities are a zoning-approved use. Recreation and all educational uses or combinations thereof is, again, a very narrow restriction with respect to the connection to the high school. And again, those would have to be within the dimensional regulations of the zoning ordinance.
So I think that you've clearly outlined what is before us, and I really do appreciate both you and the mayor explaining that, and the clerk reading that before us. I'm going to support this as is, as it's presented. In no way do I wish to change it. Thank you.
So the motion on the floor by Counselor Darcy. Counselor Darcy, I'm just going to ask you to repeat the changes you'd like to see made in the order.
So starting at the second... Sorry, the second line. Horticulture. I'm going to replace the... I propose to replace that with "horticulture, agriculture, and educational uses related to the same whilst preserving the entirety of the land in perpetuity as open space, farmland, or passive recreation."
You've heard a sense of the motion.
Could I get a roll call?
A roll call's been requested.
Point of information.
Counselor Fossey.
We both need it for this motion to pass.
Simple majority.
Thank you.
Point of information, the motion before, Mr. Vice President, is to amend based on Counselor Darcy's language. Thank you.
Correct. Counselor Bradley MacArthur.
Yes.
Counselor Darcy.
Yes.
Counselor Dunn is recused. Counselor Durkey.
No.
Counselor Harris.
No.
Counselor Katz.
No.
Counselor Akava.
Yes.
Counselor Fossey.
No.
Counselor LeBlanc.
No.
President McMiniman.
No.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Paz.
Yes.
Counselor Stanley.
No.
Counselor Vidal.
No.
Five in favor, eight opposed, one recused. So the motion to modify the order does not carry. Okay, so...
I still have the floor.
You do.
I move approval of the order as stated.
You've heard a sense of the motion. On the motion...
And I'd like a roll call, please.
Roll call's been requested.
Yes.
Counselor Darcy.
Yes.
Counselor Dunn is recused. Counselor Durkey.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Katz.
Yes.
Counselor Akava.
No.
Counselor Fossey.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Yes.
President McMiniman.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Paz.
Yes.
Counselor Stanley.
Yes.
Counselor Vidal.
Yes.
So all in favor, one opposed, one recused. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. If the clerk could read the next new matter.
Request of the mayor to transfer the care, custody, and control of the property located at One Baum Avenue to the Waldham Public School Department.
Madam Mayor.
As I said, there were three questions tonight. Mr. Vice President, should we purchase it? What do we do with it? Who will have the care, custody, and control? I have put forth that the school department have the purposes for the care, custody, and control for the purposes contained in the taking. And I say that based upon the fact that the property is right next to it. I only anticipate the access. I'm not going to try to go through the neighborhoods, Mount Vernon. I intend to use the right-of-way through Mount Wally, and I feel that, you know, would basically limit the number of vehicles going in and out of there. And I'm not intending to have anything else, not having a farm stand or anything there. But... So I feel that the school department is the most logical, having the property abuts the Waldham High School.
Counselor Akava.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So did you approach the school department, or did they approach you in terms of taking care, custody, and control of this?
I had a meeting with them to tell, to advise them that I had been in discussions with the city council. So that I did not want to come before you, not having at least... I had talked to the superintendent. I brought the superintendent up to the parcel. Many of the other school committee members knew where the parcel was. So I did actually, and I can't get into it, because it was an executive session, but I did have a discussion with them about whether or not, about care, custody, and control.
And how long ago was this?
Within the last couple of months.
So did they have any plans at this time? Any ideas of what they'd like to do with this land?
Well, the only ideas that were, you know, stated there is that part of the science program right now, so for example, you know, general science, biology, all of these things are part of the agriculture and horticulture. To be a true Chapter 74 program, much more would have to be done to have actual people. But at this time, I feel that the educational use would be through the general science and biology and chemistry courses of the current Waldham High School.
And you said to access that you would do Mount Wally with cars, but would there be a way to walk to, directly from the new high school site? Or would they have to get in cars and drive around through the...
No. May I go over there, Mr. Vice President?
You may. Yep.
So right here is Mount Wally. This is the access. There's a legal access here, legal access here. So I walk over. I walk this way, down, and it basically comes into this field. This part here, I walked up and down twice, but this is more treacherous, and this comes into the wetlands. This would more than likely be a way to come in.
So there is an access, a walking access from the current site?
There's like a little path.
Okay.
Yes. So you would come around here, and then you'd end up right here, and then naturally the high school is like this now. But because the wetland replication is there, I wouldn't want them to be going right through the wetland replication. That wetland replication for the intermittent stream has been done and signed off by the law.
Okay. And to do the, what you said, to do the current biology in certain school department courses, would they be able to, would the school department be able to do that with the current staff on hand? Would they be coming to us for more staff?
I will respectfully ask the superintendent to answer that question.
Is he here?
He is.
Good evening, Mr. Doctor Regan.
Thank you, Counselor.
So understandably, this has only been a few months old, but with what the current courses, do you think you could take care of that with the current staff, or will you be asking for more staff for the science department?
No, I think for the first layer that the mayor just described, incorporating it into the science program, we could do with the staff that we have.
And then to follow up with what the mayor mentioned about Chapter 74, are we looking at a whole new department, department head, teachers, or...?
Yeah, so it wouldn't be a new department or new department head. It would fall under career technical education, but it would be a new Chapter 74 program, which takes many years to develop and get approved through the state. That would be a long-range plan that we'd have to put together, because that would require additional staffing likely, or repurposing of existing staffing. We'd have to look at that.
And do you see the Waldham School Department headed that way with this land?
I think I could certainly see us doing the first layer, which is incorporating it into science. The Chapter 74 piece is such an involved process that I think we'd really have to take time to study that, and whether or not that is indeed feasible, if we have the interest level among students to enroll in that particular program, which is a part of the process also, seeing if there's interest. Otherwise, the state wouldn't necessarily approve it.
And are you okay, have you walked, but the mayor said that there are two ways up to this property, and you're comfortable with that, the students walking that path and the safety of all students?
He didn't walk with me on that.
I didn't walk that path.
He came in through the path over here.
Okay, that's fine. I was just asking.
We went up to about here, and then we walked around.
Correct.
In the middle of the summer, we did that. Well, it was eggplant time, so it had to be obvious.
That's right. That's right.
Do you think, while it's great, I'm very happy we're having, building this brand-new high school and a new curriculum coming in, do you think it is needed to have this land for the science department?
Well, I mean, I sort of, my philosophy around education is that if we have opportunities to provide a variety of experiences for kids, then certainly I would support that. Given the adjacency of the land, the fact that the farm is currently active, the fact that the current owner plans to stay on for a little while longer, I think it provides a good opportunity for kids to engage in something that perhaps otherwise they would not. So from that perspective, I do see it as valuable.
Great. And as you said, with the current owner staying on for two years, is... What would be the kind of transition if he's not there? How, do we have, you know, someone to take care of the farm? Would that be under, being under the care, custody, and control of the school department? Is it something that you think the school department can do, can take care of a five-acre farm if he's gone, when the owner's gone?
That's something that we'd have to think through about, you know, what that looks like, and it's not, you know, we do, of course, have staff that currently take care of grounds, so there are, and I don't think we'd be sort of on our own and putting that on the shoulders of just the students that are involved. But once the owner sort of peels back from his responsibilities, of course, we'd have to have that plan in place to see how we'll maintain it, how much of the land we'd maintain for growing, and what other purposes we'd have. There's space there for greenhouse down the road. I mean, there's other opportunities there as well.
And I guess my last question to that, and I truly don't know, is do you know how much it costs to maintain a farm, a five-acre farm?
I don't know, because of plants, fertilizer, water. I can't get to the mountain. Connected to the city's water for that, and he put the underground systems in, so he has all the irrigation systems in there. Not all of the land is farmland, so there's a good part of this land that's farmed. Particularly as you, as soon as you go beyond that stone wall, it's farmed. So, but he has basically put a lot of money into the farm himself, and that's what he does, you know what I mean? He's done it since he's a, you know, young guy.
Right.
And I believe, you know, naturally, the irrigation systems would have to be turned on and off. The school department has irrigation systems in most of their things, particularly Larry Field, and the other sites, so I think that they know how to do that too. But as far as actual cost, he has indicated to me that he's going to continue to do it. And as you know, he gives away all his produce to needy people, as well as, you know, he grows a lot of vegetables and a lot, and he's got a lot of people that want to have the produce too.
Sure. I, nothing but great respect for Mr. Manteno and what he does. My concern is, are we going to be able to handle it when he's gone?
Well, if you really handle it like a farm, you're only going to cultivate a certain amount of it every year, because you have to rotate your fields, and you have to give them rest. So, you know, maybe what I'll have is them come up with a farm plan, and no matter what, that's what you have to do to do it. You have to have a farm plan, when you can rest, when you can do, what type of things you have to put in, you know, all of the stuff in the soil. So I would imagine, in the beginning, could I go over there again? In the beginning, he only farmed over here. Little section here, and a little section here. And he expanded it that, and he made, the pumpkins are grown over here. So the last thing is what he's done here. He hasn't farmed here yet. So this is the only section that he's working on. This was actually a house that was there, and that foundation is still there. But he cleaned up all around here, you know what I mean? So, you know what I mean? The neighbors have indicated that they were happy with the cleanup that he did, because it was really overgrown. From over here, it was all overgrown. I knew that the original Arigo right here, I actually worked with her when I was going to college. And, you know, the farm has... And, you know, the farm, the farm has been run by that family for many years, but we're, I feel we're fortunate. If you have a true science program, it's all about sustainability. At the new high school, the upper deck is supposed to have some of the sustainability, but this is all in tune with all the climate stuff and all that today. That's all part of the science, and that's, I think, where the chemistry, the biochemistry, the biology would all come together here. Plus, you can also provide food for the poor. Depending on how, they want to make, you know, break even on what they're doing, you know what I mean? And we'd like them, them to break even, and then after that, I think food should be donated. Because there's a lot. I ran a six-acre farm in there, in case you want to know.
So you're going to run this farm?
No. It would be a conflict of interest, but I'm not saying that I don't love farming, so. But, but in the same sense, in today's world, the education of this, it, there's so many new things about agriculture today, and, you know, how to make it not going up with the climate, whether it be what you're using for fertilizer, what you, you know, all organic and, there's so much to learn today about this. And I, I'm kind of happy that anybody that's interested in biology, and, you know, I would say that we would have internships here, you know, like the Summer Works Program. They have a Summer Works Program as well, you know. What people don't know is, one of the best things in the world, if you're, if you're a gardener or a farmer, that you, you see it from the beginning to the end, and there's nothing like the taste of vegetables like that. But the whole sustainability issue, I think, is the key. You've got to teach them from seed to tilling, the end of it. So I'm, and I didn't mean to digress, I'm just saying it's not just about farming anymore because it's a very complicated, you know, area now because you're dealing with all the climate. Okay, and I, I respect your opinion.
No, it's, it's, I, I do not disagree with the possibilities of, of what we can do with the educational aspect of it. I just have major concerns, I mean, we're building a brand-new high school, we, we, I just don't know how it's going to be taken care of, handled, the cost to run it, and I, I I think we're adding on, we're piling on where we shouldn't be. But I, I respect it, I respect what the, the current owner of the property does with his produce. And I do have one more question, based on what you were saying, you're talking about breaking even and then giving it away. So there's plans to, to grow these vegetables and sell them?
No, no. What, what he does right now is he gives it away to many food pantries.
Interested in what he does now, I'm talking about?
No, I don't have any intention, but, but the bottom line is, if they truly develop it, you'll have more produce than you need. But if you're going to be doing some agricultural experiments over there, then those are, those are controlled experiments, okay? Meaning, how do you do this and how do you do that? But I'm talking about the actual farming that you're going to do for production. He's, he's done it for two years. Now, the school department may come in and say, well, we want to do various things over here. But he's leaving the equipment too. He's going to donate the equipment to us, you know. He has the original Arigo One tractor that he did over. He bought two other tractors, you know, he, he has indicated that he's not, if he go, if he retires. Now, he said to me a minimum of two years, I don't know how he's going to walk away because he loves it, so. But in the same sense, it's great work if you like farming, it really is. And I really believe that if you look at the overall value of it, you're protecting those neighborhoods. Why don't we talk about that? You're protecting this neighborhood. Here is to the left, here is to the right, and here is to this. So neighbor, neighbor, neighbor.
I would also argue that the neighborhoods would have been protected if the land wasn't cleared, but whatever.
Well, but with all due respect, that wasn't me.
I, yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
You know what I mean? And actually, if you go and look, there's pictures of them, you know, passarallos and everybody.
All right, those, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cava. Councilor Vidal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President, to you, to the mayor, and perhaps the superintendent. Mayor, so you know, I, I do share some of the concerns of the word I've had. We are going to be getting a five-acre turnkey farm. And yet, we don't have a, a set plan. I know the superintendent referred to the first layer could be done. Yet, the plan to maintain a turnkey farm, that's what you call it, is a farm that's ready to go. You can go there, start doing, you know, whatever farming things.
No, you have to plant.
Was that?
You have to plant.
Right.
In other words, the soil has been prepared. It's not the same as the soil that's prepared at the 240 Beaver Street, but he's getting it very close.
Right, I, I have seen some of his photos in which he, and again, he gave us pumpkins a couple of years ago, and they, and, and I, and I, the concern that I have is what if, what if our plan is not ready on time, therefore this farm or the portion that has been worked on goes into some sort of disrepair or neglect?
And you can put grass in it.
Sorry?
And you can put grass on it.
But.
You know what I mean, you could plant, plant clover, you know, not, not.
Right, I mean, I don't, I don't know enough about farming to even have a, a, a dialogue about, but all, all I, all I'm looking at is at a, at a, a signing care, custody, and control of, of One Bond Avenue to the school department, yet a plan has not been set.
Okay.
That's, that's my concern, and I wanted you to reassure me that we're going to be okay if that, that is the case with no plan.
Okay, so I have, I have 29 budgets that I could respectfully ask that it be transferred to, okay? Or I could put it out, recommend, not me, just me, but which is, I could recommend that it be put out to bid for RFP to have somebody else do it. I have not recommended that, and nor am I going to put out an RFP. So what are the logical ones? Assessors, auditing, building, COA, EMS, engineering, health, IT, fire, law, library, HR, planning, recreation. So there's only really two that come to mind, recreation and schools. So I could give it to the care, custody, and control of CPW, and CPW basically maintains. So they would cut the grass and, and stuff like that. So of the 29, you know, and I didn't do transportation, veterans, wires, you know, and zoning, so all of those people. So if I went through it all, three come to mind, public works, school, and recreation. But we have a lot of recreation fields, you know what I mean? So based upon the adjacencies to the school, that's the one I selected to put forward.
Okay, understood.
And don't forget, if it goes to recreation, the Recreation Board would be the one.
Right. And if it goes to CPW, and there's no board there, the, the director will have to be in charge of maintaining. I mean, at, at the end of the day, I do want this to be part of the school, and as, as the superintendent said, a chapters, to expand our Chapter 74, you know, what we offer, that's not going to be overnight. It's going to take years for us to get it, to get to that level.
I will say that I think I got a letter from Essex Ag, and the tuition was about 29,000 a year that I have to pay to go to Essex Ag from the school department. So it's, that's for one student to go to Essex Ag. So, um, but I think if you develop a science program that's part of the high school curriculum, you will get some that are interested in horticulture, agriculture, open space, environment. I think, especially this generation of student, I think they're very conscious of what we should be doing with the land.
And I agree with you, I, I do not disagree with you. Again, the, the concern that I have is having this land given to the school department yet without a plan, and, and not really.
Facilities Department would technically be in charge of it. But what I'm saying to you is, the key is to get the people trained. And that's why the owner agreeing to stay on, he said a minimum of two years. Now, that's what he said to me. But he knows that he has to train somebody to do this, and that includes training the facilities people. You know, it's just like Larry Field, they had to be trained on, on the systems. I mean, I have to give the school custodians a lot of credit because they actually are trained on all the HVAC, computerized models and all of that, and the, the city side is now, but they were trained from the very beginning. So, and I think, you know, John Vinzone is, is a straight shooter, and he'll, he'll say, you know, we need this, this, this. But I think the Summer Works Program, because this is a seasonal thing. You know, when you start, you're seedlings, things like that. So we're not talking about having it at a full year, this is a seasonal matter. Because it's a farm, and I'm not going to be growing anything in the winter over here, I don't think.
Okay.
Unless they get a greenhouse, but I would recommend that, you know, they apply for grants for a solar greenhouse, there's plenty of great sun there. I mean, I've never seen, for a small farm, he produces Hubbard squash. Very few farmers grow Hubbard squash anymore. At the UMass Field Station, they would put Hubbard out to keep the animals away from the butternut. So Hubbard squash is a big, huge squash, and believe me, he gets, he gets a tremendous product out of there, I, you know, and his eggplants. Superintendent. You know, I mean, I'm just saying, it, it's, it, the problem that you have is you need a little bit of help too. And I believe students can help him during the summer.
Okay.
And other people that might want to volunteer, you, you know what I mean? I, I wouldn't, naturally, they'd have to go through the school department, get corbeet checked and all that. But, you know, it wouldn't be just limited to the high school students if you could get some people.
Right, we don't want people to, you know, plant flowers without telling, you know, going through the right channels of putting flower beds and stuff like that. I understand what you're saying, that's very clear. Now, what, the other question that I, that I had here is, how is, say, for example, the school department doesn't get it all together right away.
Time, yep.
And then, I know it's seasonal, I understand that, I mean, it does very clear. Could, could CPW jump in and kind of make sure it, it's somewhat maintained? I mean, could, could there be some sort of collaboration among departments?
The school department has their own maintenance.
Well, well, exactly, I mean, I, I.
I mean, I'm just saying so that, you know, they'd have to have the equipment naturally, but, I mean, there's one guy that works in Park and Rock, and he, he's a good kid, Matt, I mean, he's kind of like the, the one that goes around, he'd get that done. But I'm not going to, that whole crew at CPW Park's department, and, because, you know, they merge together, but they, they take care of a lot of things, including the cemetery. So they have the equipment and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
I mean, but I'm not, I have to say for the record, I, I'm not assigning that to them, because if they're listening from home.
No, but I, but I.
I mean, I, I, I don't intend to have this be a CPW area, but.
But I mean, if, but there are opportunities that perhaps it can, some collaboration.
Sure, there'd be collaboration.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You've got several people, you've got, in the city's planning department, you have a registered landscape architect, you know what I mean? So there's all kinds of people that can help out.
Understood. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Councilor Vidal. Councilor Blank.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out, I went to Minuteman Tech as a post-grad, and I don't know if any of the councils, I'd invite you all to take a ride over to their new school. They have from seedling to germination of seeds to sprouting, they have a horticultural program. They grow their own flowers there, and then the produce is, they have a restaurant called Pfeifendrum. And they use the produce, and the students, all culinary students cook, and they actually serve lunches and dinners, and if you Google it, they have, coming up in the next couple of months, they have different lunch programs and dinner, and you go eat in the restaurant, the students serve you, they cook it, they do the whole thing. I think the opportunity here is huge, it's, and they would, if they were watching this meeting, they would be crawling out of their mind for this opportunity for the students. So I thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you, and the new high school will have a restaurant as well. As part of the CVT Career and Vocational Technical Program.
Thank you, Councilor Blank. Councilor Katz.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, through you. I think I want to ask this to the superintendent. As I, I get excited thinking about the different uses and opportunities, but I also get reminded that we, we have two other farms in the city. So aside from the adjacency, what, what value, or how, how is this helpful to, what opportunities does this bring to the school that the other farmland doesn't?
I think the adjacency allows students to access it during the day, so they don't need to be transported, they could walk there. And so I think of, as the mayor pointed out, the science program. As Councilor Blank mentioned, and I should have said this earlier, there can be a tie-in to our culinary program. I could even see a tie-in to our general food services program, which is quite excellent in the, in the schools themselves. So growing produce that's then served in all 10 schools through the cafeterias. And again, our high school students primarily being responsible for whatever it is that's grown at that time, and seeing that process of, from seeds to product, and it being delivered and used by those that are cooking the foods, either students in the culinary or our professionals that are working in our food services program across all of our different buildings.
Okay, how, how far is the farm from the new school, from the school? Like, east or?
Right away, I don't know. It's coming from Lexington Street here. Lexington Street here.
I got you.
This is Lexington Street here.
Yep.
The farm is right there.
Okay.
And the school is basically about here.
Thank you.
This, this is the field. It used to be at the, like, at the center. So it's pretty much diagonal, I mean, right across to that.
Approximately, how, how long a walk would it be?
Well, it's, you have to come down. It's probably, it took us about 10 to 15 minutes, but we were, you know, looking around, so. But if you were just walking, you could do it at least 10 to 15 minutes.
A second question is, for, for recreation, does the school department, for all of the other fields around other schools, I should know this, I mean, I know what I do, but do you allow the public to just go there and hang out and recreate there on weekends and non-school time? Or is that different than, like, city parks?
No, they, I, I mean, we don't have any systems in place that keep people off of the fields, out of school hours. We do, during school hours, we do restrict use of school fields.
So we, we could take this to mean that recreation means it's going to be open for all residents at non-school hours for, for open space?
Well, there is a gate, so there's a gate when you come in here. Yeah, Mount Wally, there is a gate, and that gate is usually locked. So there is a gate right here.
Okay, so I get, the bottom-line question is, will city residents be able to benefit from this space?
They'll be able to benefit, okay, so if something's under the care, custody, and control of the school committee, during school hours, we're in loco parentis, which means that we have a duty to supervise. So that gate would have to be locked during school hours. Now, everybody would have to be corbeet that comes in, because you have access to the student. So if you have access to this, so we would, we would have to limit access, especially during the school hours.
During school hours, but weekends?
After that, if the, it's just like the access road, if the access road's closed, you limit, so. But I'm, I'm not saying that people couldn't come in here and go up there, but they would have to be on school property to get there. So this is gated, but the rest of it, you would have to come into school property to get there.
Okay, so on, on a weekend though, a Saturday, Sunday, non-school time?
Weekend, they couldn't make their way there, but it depends what the school department says. If they say, you know, you, you know, organize use requires a permit or something like that. But if people are just walking around, you know, the school committee would have to discuss, what, if anything, do they want to put on? Do they want to have, you know, trails or anything like that?
All right, and my last question is about farming, and I'll admit, there hasn't been a farmer in my family in probably 140 years on the other side of the earth, although I, I do get credited for a nice lawn and some good basil. for a nice lawn and some good basil.
Perfect.
But I do know this about farming, is that it requires heavy equipment and heavy machinery. It, and it, I thought I heard you say at the beginning that there's no intention of hiring a, an on-staff farmer, aside from the current owner who's going to be staying there. Is this something that a, a teacher can take on and, and hop on a tractor and, and do, you know, run that machinery in order to run a farm? Or do you see something like small and organic?
Okay, I can answer that, really. So once you till the soil, the rest of it is maintaining it. So usually, in the beginning, you till, and at the end, you till. But in between, it's keeping the weeds out. So, you know, he has a lot of black mastic, you know, whatever they call it, farm mastic, but it's basically during the hot season to make sure the weeds don't overtake your plant, and make sure they have sufficient water. So...
So the school would get support from CPW for the, for the tilling?
Well, no, basically, I recommended that I would have some city workers, students, you know, that I would put this out as a potential area that you could work. So if you want to work for CPW up here, I could do that, but then they also have school, a summer program for the school. So they have their own Summer Works program. But I'm saying for the city works, I would put at least, you know, four positions out for working up here.
All right, thank you.
That would be during a six-week period in the summer.
Thank you, Council Katz. Council LaFosse.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I have one question concerning just the care, custody, and control, and how Mr. Mantenuto is going to be there. Would, obviously, to run a farm, you've got fertilizer. I know a lot of his plants, he takes from seed, and once you have the, the plant, you're, you're making plants for the following year. But is the running of the farm going to then become a line item in the school's budget for at least the next couple of years? There is a cost associated with doing this.
I don't know the answer to that question. Right now, um, the only thing is, um, he hasn't indicated that to me. I can find that out for you.
Okay. And then, short of that, you know, it's, you know, as a, as an Italian with the garden, I, I love a great garden conversation, but I think I've heard enough of gardening and hypotheticals of what we can and can't do, and what we might do. So I'd love to make the motion to approve this and move on.
Council LaFosse has moved approval of transferring care, custody, and control of One Baum Ave to the Waltham School Department. On the motion, all those in favor say aye. Roll call's been requested.
Gladly. Gladly vote.
Council Bradley MacArthur?
Yes.
Council Darcy?
Yes.
Council Dunn is recused. Council Durkey?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Council Katz?
Yes.
Council LaCava?
No.
Council LaFosse?
Yes.
Council LeBlanc?
Yes.
President McMiniman?
Yes.
Council O'Brien?
Yes.
Council Paz?
Yes.
Council Stanley?
Yes.
Council Vidal?
No.
Will there be any favor, two opposed, one recused? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, everybody.
What is the wish of the committee?
Excuse me, Chair.
Council Darcy?
I moved this matter off the table.
Council Darcy makes a motion to take a matter off the table.
This is a citizen input hearing. Hearing everything that we heard tonight, um, I think it's important to engage the neighbors, because one thing I thought of in the last few moments is a friends of Arigo Farm, in which the neighbors actually form a, um, a neighborhood group to, um, help out. And given the fact that there's been no neighborhood meeting due to the fact that the council has to recuse herself, and for full transparency, and this is such an important issue for that whole neighborhood, um, I really think it's, it's, um, important for us to reach out to the neighbors, regardless of what the votes were this evening. So I'd like that before the next...
Madam President.
Sorry, Council Darcy. You tabled that matter under the first item that we had. These are three separate items. You tabled that matter with the money. I apologize, too, but this matter is out of order.
Uh, President McMiniman has pointed out that the matter was tabled under the first item. Uh, she is correct, and so the matter is...
I'll just bring that in as a resolution on Thursday, then, for next Monday.
What's the wish of the committee? Council Paz moves to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
My name is the Speaker. I'm going to speak immediately.